Good evening and welcome to the Town of East Chester zoning board of appeals meeting for June. This is June 14, 2022. We begin our meetings with the pledge of allegiance. Please rise. Okay, while we're coming to order, I just want to go over, I usually take this time to go over the ground rules. Our meetings are conducted under Roberts' rules of parliamentary order. You don't need to know all of them, just very briefly. Action is taken on either motion or resolution, and generally people will be able to address the board when directed by the chair. One item to note, we do not accept any new correspondence after the close of the public hearings. It's actually a legal requirement. And just to remind the viewing public, our calendar is printed generally a year in advance. Our July meeting is for resolution only. There's no August meeting. I mention this because, as I printed very clearly at the terms and conditions of your application, applications first time on are never decided upon. They're heard, the public has an opportunity generally to comment, and then they're reviewed and deliberated upon individually by the board members. So, having said that, I do have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 10, 2022 meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. At this point, I'm going to call the roll for those new items. I just want to make sure there's someone present and ready to proceed. There's one old item, excuse me, one old business that is being adjourned, and that's 600 White Plains Road. So, our resolution item we'll get to in a moment, but let's go down, old business. The Dambrosio Way and Highland Avenue applications are being considered together. Is the applicant here, ready to proceed, Mr. Yanacito?
Yes.
Okay. On the new business item, 47 Apple Court, ready to proceed? Great. Item number five, 10 Ridge Street, ready to proceed?
Yes.
Great. Item number six, West Chestamet Market, Mon Mill Road, ready to proceed? Okay. Number seven, 495 Nourishell Road.
Let's see what happens there.
Number eight, that's Montgomery Avenue, ready to proceed?
Yes.
Okay. Number nine, 48 Ampel Drive.
That is Adamo Maiorano. He has another meeting in Harrison, but he should be here by the time it-
Okay. And if not, I can move the calendar out of sequence.
Okay.
Okay. 48 Ampel Drive?
That's him.
That's him, same one.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, same one? I thought you were talking about Nourishell Road. We're talking about Ampel.
Wait, you already did 189 Montgomery. We're on 48 Ampel, and now you're down to Chow.
Right. Okay, so then Nourishell Road-
There's no one here yet.
No one here yet. That I'll take out of sequence.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's what I thought you were referring to. And number 10, Chow Restaurant. Okay, that's also, that's last on the calendar. So, again, that'll be in sequence, and we'll see if the applicant is here. If not, it'll be adjourned. Okay. Resolution. I make a motion to approve application 22-14, 3 Southeast Way. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, to the vote, Mr. Cahalan?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Nerzia?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
I vote yes. That application's been approved five to zero. Okay. Before I get into the old business item, just under, procedurally, under the new business items, I've, I mentioned this on every application, but particularly tonight when we have a busy calendar. The matter is, these matters are all marked submitted, meaning that all of the documents are a public record, and they've been reviewed thoroughly by the board members. In many instances, the board members have actually visited the site. I mention this because the applicants, whether you're doing this application on your own, or you have an architect or an attorney, or whomever's appearing before you, you don't need to read the full application. It's not just for the sake of expediency, it's that, as a legal requirement, you've provided the answer to the tests, either area, or use, or if it's an interpretation. So, I generally would ask you just to summarize your application, and then the board would have opportunity to ask questions or comments, and the public can be heard. If you feel compelled, I don't want you to feel your rights are being prejudiced. If you want to read your application, it's not going to help your application, it's not going to hurt you. So, it's entirely up to you. Okay. Old business, the two applications being heard together, Dambrosio Way and Highland Avenue, and just as a reminder, the public hearing is still open on this matter. And when you come up, please state your name and address for the record, and proceed.
Good evening. My name is John Yanacito. I'm an architect, and I'm representing Mr. and Mrs. Vetrini, the owners of 6th Dambrosio Way, and Mr. and Mrs. Gentili, the owners of 88 Highland Avenue. This application was presented to the board last month, and was adjourned for further review by the town consulting engineer. The application that is in front of the board is for a lot line adjustment, where Mr. and Mrs. Vetrini are attempting to acquire a 1,560 square foot portion of the rear yard on 88 Highland Avenue. And if you look at the drawing, it's the triangular space highlighted in red. That's the area that's going to, we're looking to transfer from one lot to the other. On June 7, we had a meeting at the site with the town consulting engineer and two of the neighbors from the adjoining properties to discuss stormwater management concerns for a future swimming pool application. This application is for variances related to a lot line adjustment. It is not for variances related to a pool application. All the recommendations made by the town engineer are for a future swimming pool application, which may or may not happen. The town engineer determined that the recommendations made on his initial memo were sufficient, and as stated at the last meeting, my client is happy to include all of these recommendations if and when he files for a permit to construct a swimming pool. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Yanacito. So, again, board at this time has an opportunity to ask questions, particularly about the supplemental material. I'd like to note that there's a memo from our expert, Mr. Tremelli, dated June 7, 2022, which is part of the record. Mr. Cahalan, any questions or comments?
No.
Mr. Miller?
None.
Mr. Nerzia?
No.
Mr. DiMarco?
No.
I don't have anything at this time. I've seen the public hearing is still open. Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this application? Please come up, state your name and address for the record, and proceed.
Good evening, Chairman of the Board. Again, my name is Ryan McKean. My wife Lauren is here as well tonight. I was here in May. Reside at 171 Beach Street, which is the property behind where the applicant is. I'm a little confused. This application was adjourned at the last meeting. I went back to the minutes just to confirm that I didn't miss here. And I believe it was you, Mr. Pilla, who had said that the application was being adjourned to allow the applicant to amend the application, to include some, most, or all of the recommendations that were being made by Mr. Tremelli, and that way, the public could be heard on how these amendments to the application would affect. My understanding is, looking at the minutes and the agenda for tonight, there's been no new applications made by the applicant for tonight. So, I'm kind of in a tough position to address something that wasn't submitted, and that was the reason for the adjournment. And like I said, I went back to the minutes just to confirm I didn't misunderstand it. And I mean, the words were, "to be submitted to allow the public to be heard about," you know, "how you're going to address these five things that Mr. Tremelli had recommended, including stormwater management, the applicant should confirm whether there would be a pool cover, because that would take up more space, the, at the minimum, to install subsurface infiltrators, the plan should illustrate the connections between the pool and the pool equipment, and number five, the temporary erosion and sediment control." So, unless I missed something, I didn't see anything for the public to be heard, because the application hasn't been amended to address those things.
Well, if I may, as a point of order, the application was for a lot line redivision, minus subdivision, and the original memo of Mr. Tremelli had to do with recommendations as to drainage and other issues. The applicant, that was not part of the applicant's application. And then Mr. Tremelli reviewed the site and had another memo, and I believe, if I'm not mischaracterizing the applicant, they're willing to adopt all of the proposals in both of those memos. So, Mrs. Yuli, go ahead, please.
So, Mr. Ryan, can I just, again, clarify a couple of things, and clarify some things that you said? Because when, I remember when Mr. Pilla made the statement that you made, and I clarified for the architect and for the board that we did not expect them to submit plans for a pool or the stormwater drainage, because that is not what's being proposed. And one thing that I want to be very clear on is that any of this discussion with regard to the pool, in all honesty, the applicant is being very gracious for us to impose these conditions at this time, because he is not proposing a pool at this time. But what he did agree to do is, rather than have us refer those to an engineer or to the planning board later, understanding that there were two neighbors who are in the vicinity of the site, one of which is adjacent at 173 Beach, and I believe you're not technically adjacent to the property, you're kind of catty-cornered to the property. But, but again, there were no expectations that plans for a pool would be provided, because it is not what's being proposed here. But what the applicant has agreed to is that they will implement, if and when they submit an application for a pool, they will implement these stormwater management measures. And so, that is something that has been, will be recorded within their property file. When they submit an application for a pool, our engineer will review it. We're starting to review pools in more detail now than we have previously. The only reason you're hearing about this pool is because they happen to be in front of the board for this lot line adjustment, and it was our understanding that it is because they anticipate putting a pool there, but they have zero obligation to provide plans for a pool at this time that they're not proposing. And part of the reason that they met with you and the neighbors from 173 Beach Street is because we were wanting to make sure that we were cognizant of and appropriately addressing your concerns, but they're not directly related to the variance that's being proposed.
I appreciate that clarification.
If I may, if I may, thank you, Mrs. Yuli. And so that you don't have to go back and forth and get up and down, I just want to, so that you can comment on this, and that is that, as a condition to an approval, their acceptance of those, of the recommendations in the report may very well wind up being a condition of the approval.
Yes, I think it will be, which means that when they, if and when they submit a pool, they'll be required to implement these stormwater management measures. And I think one of the reasons that they're agreeing to it is because, in all honesty, we would require that under any circumstances, but we want to make sure that you and your neighbors understand that these will be addressed. It'll be on the record that they need to be addressed, but they're the same type of measures that anybody that's installing a pool is required to implement at this point.
Right, but it's also being circularly bootstrapped with this application?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
How did I do? Okay? Okay, proceed.
I appreciate the clarification, and yes, I agree that there was some colloquially after the statement about the reapplication, about so on and so forth. But to me, at least the way the minutes read, it was that there was supposed to be a reapplication as to what you're going to do. So, it's very clear, it's not someone standing up here saying, "Oh, I'll do all of this." That way, the public could be heard.
But the application has remained the same. They have not amended, there's nothing to amend. Again, it's not an application for a pool. It's an application for a lot line adjustment. So, they can't amend the application, because the application illustrates the proposed lot line adjustment. They are not proposing a pool. They were, they indicated they planned to put a pool on there. Had they not indicated that to us, there would have been no opportunity for this discussion.
I understand that. I'm just reiterating what the minutes had said, which is where the confusion came. But what a further point of confusion, or I guess contention, if you will, is the application includes states in the applicant's own writing or his architect's is, this is a variance for a lot line adjustment, and to construct an in-ground swimming pool. It's on page one of the application. That's stated there. I understand that maybe that's not the proper form, but that's just what's stated in the application.
Okay, but to free you up from being caught up in the minutia of the application, speak, let me, let me continue, please. You speak freely about the pool. Speak freely about any part of this. So, don't feel like you're compelled to speak just on this. So, speak as if the entire breadth of what has been discussed is before you. So, go ahead.
Understood. Well, I guess that's a little point of confusion, because saying this has nothing to do with pools, nothing to do with the pool, but the application-
Well, we're trying to clarify-
Again, you're trying to limit the scope. I understand that.
I'm not trying to limit the scope. I'm trying to allow you to speak on everything.
No, I-
You seem very concerned about the procedural aspect of this.
Absolutely. And I wasn't meaning that you were trying to cut my limit of scope. I meant, you meant, it was a discussion. So-
Okay.
And if I could just speak briefly about the stormwater management, that was only one of five questions that Mr. Tremelli had. And his memo of June 7 only addresses the stormwater modifications, and says everything else from his prior memo is in place, and that this should be addressed. And he has questions about a pool cover, and subsurface infiltrators, all these things which have just not been addressed. So, I don't know how I can comment on them, other than to say, if someone's going to stand up and say, "Oh, no, we'll do all of that." It kind of limits me in that aspect. And I appreciate the board saying, obviously, anything that the engineer, the independent engineer hired by the town, you know, they'll make that a condition. But I just, I think, you know, the public should have an ability to be able to comment on it when something more specific of, "Okay, this is what's being recommended by the independent consultant for the town. This is how we're going to address it." The last thing I'd like to address, and this was brought up by Mr. Cahalan in his comments in the May meeting, about the nonconformity and the impervious surface. And I understand that, you know, impervious surface and ordinances with that, and have changed over years, and, you know, you have a house or a property that may have been built 50, 60, 40 years ago, before these kind of restrictions came in. And I'd just like to readdress and bring it to the board's attention again, is, there were nonconformities, and now we're asking to go nonconformity again. This isn't a property that was built 30, 40, 20 years ago. It's, to me, I just have some concerns on, that's what these ordinances, and we're built to prevent happening. And now, we're in that position where, before even putting in the pool, there are nonconformities of an impervious surface, and now we're asking for more. This isn't a house that was 40 years old before the law changed. And I just want to bring that to the board's attention, that's all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard? Please come forward.
I'm Bob Tesoro. I'm at 173 Beach Street. And, you know, excuse me for my ignorance on some of this, the breadth of this matter. I was also under the impression that this was a meeting about approval for a pool, an in-ground pool, to be installed adjacent to my property. You know, I am, I'm the direct border of Dambrosio Way. And so, if I'm to understand you correctly, this is not a meeting about a pool being approved. That would be a separate-
This has nothing to do with a pool being installed.
It has nothing to do with a pool.
Correct.
So, then, I can be very brief. When I spoke to Joe Sumelli, we went over all these points, and I was satisfied with his recommendations, and the fact that he said he has never made any recommendations on any issue in the town that have not been implemented. However, one thing that he really did not have an answer for was the fact that installing an in-ground pool, which requires earth to be taken away, which is absorbent by nature, and replacing that earth with thousands of gallons of chlorinated water above my property and Ryan's property, there's, there's no upside there for me, only downside. So, that's all I have to say tonight, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Would anyone else like to be heard on this application? Okay. Well, before, I'll give you an opportunity to respond, Mr. Yanacito, but before you do that, I just want to have a point of order, and I'd like Mrs. Yuli and Mr. King to correct me, since you're the experts on planning and building. But what's happening tonight is that if this, if this goes to resolution, there may very well be conditions in this approval for a lot line redistribution that will have all of the elements required of stormwater management and drainage for a future pool. However, any future application to build a pool will have to comply with the building code at the time it's applied for. So, if there's more stringent requirements from the building department or code, it must be met. If they're less stringent, it would not avail. These conditions would control, but it controls the variance. Did I say that correctly?
Yes, except for I just want to qualify one thing.
Please.
That the building code doesn't address the stormwater management requirements for a pool. It would, it addresses things that Mr. Ryan was concerned about otherwise, which are proper fencing, safety issues, that kind of thing. Stormwater management is something that, that we internally review, you know, anytime there's an application, and typically only when there's an increase in impervious surfaces. So, this is going above and beyond. So, in that sense, you're right, it's more stringent with regard to what we typically in the past have required for a pool. But we have started to require more stringent stormwater evaluations of pools because of the very concerns that neighbors have had recently. So, just recently, for a variance that was related to a pool for 7 Forbes, that Mr. Tremelli reviewed, there were some conditions of approval attached to that. So, you are right, that if the building code changes and is more stringent, they would have to comply. If it's less stringent, they would still have to comply with these, but these issues aren't really addressed in the, in the state building.
I just wanted to make sure there's some clarity with the public on what's going and what's being heard by the board tonight. Mr. Yanacito, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a second to address the comments. And yes, this is not an application for, we have not filed an application for a pool. We only filed for a realignment of the property lines. And realignment of the property lines will not change the character or have a negative impact on the neighborhood. It's basically taking a line from this point and moving it to another point. Everything in the existing condition stays exactly the same. The pool permit, if, if they decide to construct a pool, will be a totally separate application, and we're, we're going to accept all the recommendations from the town engineer, and the town engineer will review that, that application before a building permit is issued. So, we're, we're going to comply with everything he put in his memo. On the question about the noncompliance coverage, as part of the application, yes, both, both properties are currently nonconforming in relation to the coverage. But as part of this application, we are proposing to remove a certain amount of coverage. So, we're actually going to reduce the degree of nonconformance when you look at both lots together. So, we're actually going to have less coverage with the reapportionment than what we do have today.
Thank you, Mr. Yanacito. Let's see if the board has any further comments or questions. But before I do that, I make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, to the board. Mr. Cahalan, any questions or commentary?
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess what I'm hearing from the public is a concern, when they do put the pool application in, it may not need a variance. So, their concern is, will they get heard, or will this be a problem? Because if the pool is by right, there's no reason to get a variance, right?
Well, but these conditions are going to be part of-
No, no, I understand that completely. It's just, I think their concern is, this is a lot line adjustment, no argument with that. Somehow, we got this into, you know, on the application, it said, maybe for a future pool. Okay. So, now, their concerns, the neighbors' concerns is, well, if you're thinking about it, and you're purchasing land from somebody else to move your lot line, pretty good shot that someday you're going to put that pool in. Maybe.
Right.
Maybe. But then, that pool may not need a variance. It may be by right. So, I think, you know, having this discussion, my point is, is that I think the public, the neighbors are worried that they're not going to get their day in court, if you will, to do what they want to do, or find out what they want to find out. I think what we've done here to help them, in any case, is that we've made conditions that are, that really do address some of the issues that they brought up, you know, about, you know, the impervious, I've been on this board over 10 years, and I've seen the impervious surfaces go up and up and up, and you know, everybody knows, that's one of the questions I always bring up. I'm always concerned about it, right? So, you know, if it's a, if their application is by right, then it's by right. So, they'll never get a chance to talk about the pool again, right? But maybe, the public has to realize that what we've done here is try to help them put these conditions into a lot line approval for a future consideration that may or may not ever happen. That's my comment.
You're correct. If this, if the pool hadn't been mentioned as part of this application, the reapportionment-
I would have been home a long time ago.
Yeah, the reapportion would have been approved, and then we would have filed for a pool, which would have required no variances, and we wouldn't need to put all of this additional drainage in.
And that's my point.
So, you're correct. By speaking about it at this meeting, we're going to have these conditions that are going to, and only because the neighbors brought up concerns about drainage.
Right. And, and-
And it is helping the neighbors.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's not perfect for either side, because there's going to be a lot of money invested, and there's no guarantee that that's going to fix their concerns. Let's be honest. Water is water. It goes where it wants.
But this goes above and beyond any pool application that I've done in this town for the past 20 years.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, John.
Anything further, Mr. Cahalan?
I think I'll stop there.
Mr. Miller?
Nope, I'm good.
Mr. Nerzia?
No, no questions.
Mr. DiMarco?
Nothing.
And my only comment is that, I guess, it kind of backs up what Mr. Cahalan is saying, that I think because of where the trends have been, addressing this issue at this point is, for lack of a better term, smart business. Because we won't know until the, the plans are submitted to the building department, what this pool will look like. But as you can see, they take a life of their own on, and as you'll see with other applications, sometimes if they're too close to the house, and a fire department can't get a ladder there, it's going to have to be moved. So, they're sui generis. They have their own set of facts, and I think that just addressing the drainage issue for that part of the application, which is a negative impact on the neighborhood, is the most important element, I think. And it's what the board's been focused on, it's what I'm focused on. So, anyway, I have nothing further. I make a motion to adjourn this for resolution at the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Enjoy the summer.
We'll be back next month.
I hope so, yeah, next month.
Good for you, John.
Okay. First item of new, excuse me, Counselor? Okay. First item of new business, this is item number four on our calendar. This is 7 Apple Court. If you could state your name and address for the record, and while you're setting up, I'll just mention that this is an area variance to legalize an existing deck with a rear yard setback of, well, it's seeking a variance of about 10.5%. Please proceed.
Good evening, gentlemen, ma'am. My name is Scott Quinough. I reside at 7 Apple Court. In 2018, we decided to put a deck, my patio was sinking. We went with a deck. We hired a gentleman from Mount Kisco. That came very well recommended doing these decks. I put my house up for sale, and it was during that procedure that I was told through the help of the town hall, several steps that I needed to take. I hired an architect, and it was told to me that, unbeknownst to me, the lots at Apple Court are irregular. So, I'm off by 23, 24 inches in a triangle part of the deck. The extraordinary circumstance here is that I closed July 15. So, doing everything possible to get this in front of you, the lot, excuse me, the deck is not seen by any of my neighbors. I think I submitted signatures from 5 Apple Court and 9 Apple Court. My neighbor's to the side of me. Doesn't bother them. They don't even see it, and it's not an issue for, for them at all.
Thank you. And I will, please, can you take it outside? I don't have, I don't have the same fear that Catholic school put in me, because I'm not, can you gentlemen take it outside, please? Thank you. For the record, I will just mention that there are two letters that are part of the public record that are in support of this application.
Correct, sir.
Okay? Fantastic.
I also have a neighbor that, unbeknownst to me, also showed up to be in support.
Well, there'll be an opportunity for the public to be heard. At this moment, let's see if the board has any questions or comments. Mr. Cahalan?
No, I'm glad the owner actually showed up for a change. They usually don't get up to the mic and admit that they made a mistake. So, I'm very happy to acknowledge that you realize that, you know, you're asking for forgiveness, and that's okay in this particular instance.
Mr. That's, Mr. Miller? Mr., that's, Mr. Miller?
I'm waiting for your comment.
It's easier to seek, it's easier to seek forgiveness than permission.
I have no comments.
That's Jesuit education. Mr. Nerzia?
My only comment is, this contractor came highly recommended. I don't think he'll be giving any recommendations.
And he's from Mount Kisco, he does a lot of these decks in Westchester County, he should've known, or at least he should've taken the time to look into the county and...
Yeah, well, now, that's why you're here.
That's why I'm here, unfortunately.
No other questions.
Thank you. Mr. DiMarco?
No questions.
I don't have anything at this time. I'd like to make a motion to open this matter to the public for a public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Would the public like to be heard? If you could state your name and address for the record, and proceed.
Good evening, Your Honor. My name is Amani Riad. I live in Four Apple Court. I've been there for over 20 years, and I fully support Scott and Teresa's petition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
So synced it to the point, wonderful. And would anyone else like to be heard on this application? Please, name and address.
Good evening, my name is Gregl, I'm the architect.
Okay.
Client hired to help him rectify the situation. Unbeknownst, he, he is honest in saying that he did make a mistake, well, the contractor did make a mistake, and he put his faith in the contractor. The moment he found out that there was an issue with the, that a variance would be required for his deck, he contacted me and we had a discussion that this would be the right thing to do as soon as possible. And it's a, it's a, it's a rectangular portion of the deck, it's two feet by 23 feet, not even the width of the back of the deck. But I just want to let you know that he's, he was very honest and outright in wanting to make sure that the mistake he made was made known to everyone, and he's willing to do whatever it is to do the right thing.
Thank you.
So if we said, "Take it down," he would?
Excuse me?
So if we said, "Take it down," he would?
He has to. If you, whatever the board decides to do, that's what he needs to do, correct? That's why you guys are up there.
I think that's a rhetorical question, but thank you.
It's a rhetorical question.
And we'll, we'll give you some latitude, even though you're, you're the applicant.
You can agree.
Would anyone else from the public like to be heard on this? Okay, seeing no one, I make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter. Second? Mr. Kahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, back to the board. Mr. Kahalan?
Nothing further.
Mr. Miller?
No, just want to note that if you hadn't shown up tonight, that might not have been a rhetorical question.
Mr. Nerzia?
Nothing.
Mr. DiMarco?
Nothing.
The only thing I have is that your application was clear to the point, and you seem to have addressed the five-part test necessary. I make an application to adjourn this matter for resolution at the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
New business item number five, this is 10 Ridge Street. While you're setting up, this is an area variance for a proposed, for proposed exterior steps. State your name and address for the record, and please proceed.
Good evening, chair members of the board. Louis Campana, architect, on behalf of the applicant, Matt Forgione. 10 Ridge Street is a 13,500 square foot lot located in the R5 zone. It fronts both Prospect Avenue to the south and Ridge Street to the east, and the house is situated towards the frontage on Ridge Street. The, the southerly setback is nine feet, and the northerly setback is, is eight feet, which are the, the minimum yard requirements for the side yard in R5 zone. I do also want to, to mention that this project was in front of the ARB last year along with the planning board, and it does conform to all the area bulk regulation, regulations as it exists today. It is currently under construction as well. Just recently, the owner approached me with, with an idea of creating more direct, efficient access to the mudroom, which is located on the northerly side of the footprint or the floor plan of the house. That's the side where we have the eight-foot setback. And pursuant to section 7D25, I believe it is, is that correct? An open uncovered stair on the side yard shall not be within six feet of the side property line. Now, in order to create that direct access from the exterior, and to create a stair that meets minimum code requirements, we are proposing and asking relief from that section to go beyond the setback by 20 inches. That would leave approximately four foot five, four foot six inches to the property line, which I would believe is sufficient for proper access and regular maintenance.
Thank you. Okay. Let's go to the board, I'll start in reverse order. Mr. DiMarco, any questions or comments?
None.
Mr. Nerzia?
Actually, two, two comments. The first one is, actually, it's a beautiful house. It's, it's, kudos on that. But the, the more important comment is, is that the door that leads to these steps is already there, so...
That's what I put it to a halt.
What, what was the genesis of that? I'd like to just see why it was built with the door cut out already?
Right.
And now asking for the permission.
So it was originally proposed as a window, but after walking through the house, after it was framed, that's when they came up with, they approached me with the idea, he went ahead where that window was and cut it down to the floor, and I said, "No, guys, wait, this has to be a plan amendment, let's study this." And the door was delivered, and he installed it, to keep it waterproofed on the interior, because they're sheet rocking and finishing right now. Yeah. So in a way, asking for forgiveness.
Okay. Along that Jesuit theme, just wanted to get that clarified. No other questions?
You have every right, you spend a lot of money on Jesuit tuition.
Don't get me started on that.
Anyway, Mr. Miller?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Kahalan?
My question was, was the mudroom originally part of the, the plans?
The mudroom was not originally part of the plans. The living room and family room kitchen area was always on the southerly side of the house, so we obviously didn't want to impact that and the way that the plan originally flowed. So the mudroom, the powder room, and the smaller dining room, those were a large portion of the renovations to the first floor. So initially, when you entered the house through the garage, you would walk up the stairs and you'd be somewhat near the, the mudroom. But to have that direct access from, from the rear yard or the side yard, the, the minor element the stair is, does really enhance the usability of, of that function.
Anything further, Mr. Kahalan?
No.
I don't have anything at this time. I make a motion to open the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Would the public like to be heard on this matter? Okay, seeing no one, I make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Kahalan, anything further?
No.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Nerzia?
No.
Mr. DiMarco?
No.
I think you've answered the five-part test clearly in your application, and I think you've, to my satisfaction, anyway, answered it. So I make a motion to adjourn this for resolution at the next meeting, the July meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, item six on the new business, One Mill Road. It's an area variance to permit 43 parking spaces. Name and address for the record, and please proceed.
Good evening, chairman, board members, town, employees. My name is Joe Fernandez, I'm an architect, 575 White Plains Road, Eastchester, New York. I'm in front of the board for this applicant that's proposing a meat market in the old 3D cleaners. It's a large building on a small lot, kind of landlocked, and always historically relied on street parking and the municipal lot in the library. By the town standards, we have a shortcoming for the particular space based on a retail use. Our design, if you've looked at the drawings at all, depicts a large work area in the center, which would be a place for butchering of meats. This will be a meat market, and a perimeter area that's gonna have a little bit of seating in the front on Mill Road for some quick dining, maybe a sandwich or something, and some grab-and-gos between the front and rear entrance, which have historically existed. And, and that's pretty much it. We, we, you know, we have this parking shortfall, and, you know, I know for many years myself, I either went to the back to go and see Tony at 3D, or parked on the street somewhere. So I don't see that changing any way or impacting the neighborhood in any different fashion.
Okay, thank you. Mr. DiMarco, any questions or comments?
None.
Mr. Nerzia?
Just one question. I know you mentioned, or it seems that the, the focus of the business is the selling of the meat, and, you know, grab-and-go is like an incidental portion, but if the, the business focus changes, and it's more on the grab-and-go, more on the sit-down, presumably you would need more parking for that. People wouldn't be just going in for a minute, buying something and leaving, they'd be sitting down, and wherever they're parked, that car's there for a certain period of time. So is that anything that you could address for that concern?
I don't, I don't find that as much of a concern. I mean, there's limited seating in the front, I believe there's seating for eight patrons. And candidly, I mean, the lot, and I travel past that lot five times a day, every day, is 60 to 70% empty at all times. You know? I understand that people could spend a little bit more time than just picking up a roast or something, but I, I honestly don't see that as an issue. I mean, even if I went across the street to Barata or some other place, I, I would just park in the municipal lot, and, you know, and it's fine.
Yeah, okay. No, no other questions?
Okay. Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Kahalan?
Yeah, I mean, I, I kind of disagree with you. I think the parking situation all the time is horrible, just is. You know, pizza, the pizza store is very popular, trying to get near that place on a Friday or Saturday, you know, is tough. You know, it's a difficult situation putting another retail place in there, but, you know, let's be, let's be honest, parking isn't good there at all. That's my first comment. The other thing is, is, you know, on your five-part test, you're kind of in conflict with number three and number five. You, you write one thing in number three and you talk about it, you're saying in number three, which is not the question, that it's not self-created, but in number five, you say it is self-created. So could you kind of clarify what you're talking about here?
Certainly, certainly. In number five, I mentioned that it's self-created because he chose this spot. It happens to be in this...
And that's the question, right? In number five?
Well, no, because it, it is in the central business district, it is a, a prominent place in town. I mean, for 50 years, I think, when 3D had it, you know, it just lulled everybody to sleep. And if you notice, the neighborhood right across the street, you have a laundromat, you have dry cleaners, you have up the street between that location and here, the same thing...
I, I do live here, so you don't have to waste your time. I'm pretty familiar with that area.
I'm not...
If I may, if I may, just try not to talk over each other, the stenographer's gonna have a heart attack, and we only want to pay, not time and a half, just regular...
Look at the tape.
Go ahead. Proceed.
You were talking, you were talking.
So, yes, so I, I think the place got inundated with laundry and dry cleaning, and regardless whether it's a market or any type of a business, unless it was a dry cleaner, we wouldn't be standing in front of you. So any business is gonna come here because there's gonna be a parking shortfall.
I agree with that.
Now, great. Now, the point that you had made was that it's crowded on Fridays and Saturday nights. Well, I'm not sure what hours you're speaking to, I'm assuming dinnertime and on.
Listen, you go by that, that, that business is a great business for this town. That business is always booming, there's kids outside all the time. I don't care how old it is, the kids are there. You go inside, it's a nice mix of people, you know, so, you know, I'm in the town a long time, you know, we have a lot of pizza shops, right, but that one seems to do pretty, pretty well.
Yeah.
And it's, it's, you know, to, I agree with you, you're in it, you're up, you're up against, you know, 43 parking spaces is never gonna happen.
Correct.
Okay? I understand that. But how many people are gonna be staffed in this place?
I believe there's two butchers and probably a secretary or something, and maybe in the back.
Where are they gonna park? They're gonna park in the back?
They're gonna park in the municipal lot. They're gonna park on the street, they're gonna park wherever they have to park. I'd do the same thing. I mean, I don't have a choice. And I frequent the, the pizza place also.
Me too, I love it.
So it's, it's a great, great business.
Grandma's Pizza's my favorite, so...
Anything further, Mr. Kahalan?
No.
Any other pizza places you want to recommend?
Yeah.
I'll give you the menu if you want.
I'm getting hungry now.
I'm a fan.
Okay, so before I make a motion for the public to be heard on this, I just want to make the comment that this location is going to face a parking variance no matter what is put there. It's very similar to Garth Road and some other areas where there's just zero parking. And so your comment earlier about unless it was a dry cleaner, it would have to be exact, that exact dry cleaner in terms of the build-out, et cetera, otherwise it would probably need a variance. So I understand your argument, I think the concern is whether or not certain uses are more prone and will have more issues with parking than others, but you've made your point, and I think I'm gonna make a motion now for the public to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this application? Okay, seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Just if you could enter into the record that you received a letter from...
Oh, I'm sorry, good point. It, it's part of the record, but let me make a, make a note, that there was an email of one objection to the application by Angelo Liberatore. He could, he had a conflict, couldn't make it, so it's, it's, the objection's part of the record. Thank you, Mrs. Yuli. Okay. Now I make a motion to close the public hearing on this. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let me go back to the board. Mr. DiMarco?
Nothing.
Mr. Nerzia?
Nothing.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Kahalan?
No.
And, you know, I, the, one of the reasons why new applications are, are not decided on, because they're deliberated in, by each individual, and you've given us a lot to think about. The issue of parking there is gonna be met with anyone who is going into those stores. So we have some to consider, we, you're, again, your application's submitted, we have all of the materials, so I make a motion to adjourn this for resolution at the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number seven on the agenda, 495 Nourishel Road. Name and address for the record, and while you're setting up, this is a canopy over an existing fuel pump at a gas station. I shouldn't call it a gas station. Please proceed, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Bilani. I represent Nunziata and Bilani Design Consultants. We are proposing a canopy structure for the owners of the Amoco Station at 495 New Rochelle Road, or it says 493, but I believe it's 495 or 497, but, so we're proposing a canopy structure on the lot. We're asking for a height variance, accessory structures of fifteen feet. We're requesting twenty-three point eight-three, so eight point eight-three. The canopy structure by its nature has to be clear at fifteen feet underneath, so and we're in an attempt to create a similar architectural language, we created a gable on the canopy structure, which creates a ridge that's higher than obviously the fifteen-foot allowable. So it's an effort to be consistent with other canopies on the street as well as the residential look of the service station that's presently existing there. So we created a gable with some fascia trim, and so it's creating a height of twenty-three point eight-three feet to the ridge.
Jonathan, do you have any drawings you can put?
I apologize, I was, I was out of town and I came and I thought it was going to be late and I forgot to bring, I didn't bring my display.
Okay, there's clips there.
I want the record to reflect Mrs. Yuli went back to her desk to bring clips.
Oh, they're here? Yeah, I got you. Not the first time?
Not the first time.
Thank you, Mrs. Yuli.
Move the elevations.
Last page.
This is a canopy structure, so this is the gable and fascia, should I?
Yeah, please. It may not get picked up, so yes, please.
So this is the canopy structure with an asphalt shingle roof, fascia white trim. So the clearance is actually, the minimum you could make it is fourteen points, fourteen foot six inches to the bottom side, so that the filling trucks can fit underneath. And we created a gable, as I said earlier, to represent the architectural language of the, on the property as well as a canopy that's down the road. There's a canopy that's another gable structure, and we have fascia white trim on the, on the outside.
Okay, thank you. Before I go to the board, I just want to clarify or ask you, I shouldn't clarify, I wanted to like to ask you. Are these canopies, for lack of a better term, stock? Meaning that you're not, for lack of a better term, stick building it? So there's certain equipment that has to go in it for fire suppression, et cetera? So I'm assuming that these things, you don't build it yourself, you send away for it?
No, there's canopy companies that you actually, I send them the design first, make sure they can build it out of the steel structure. It's not required to have fire suppression anymore in canopy structures.
You don't require it?
Yeah, it's not required.
Okay.
So they're, they, they have allowances as far as how they make these structures with the, the columns. They're pretty much made out of, made custom, but they, they make it so that they're able to make the steel spans with certain steel beams, certain heights. So you, you send them the preliminary design, then they send you shop drawings.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, to the board, questions or comments? Mr. Cahalan?
Just a question, is that gable going to match up with the building that's there?
It's, it's not going to be the exact same height due to the span of the, of the structure, but it's similar. It's not, it's right around-
It's not going to be ten feet different?
No, it's not ten feet higher.
Very good, thank you.
Anything further? Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Nersia?
No.
Mr. DiMarco?
No.
I don't have anything at this time. I make a motion, open the matter to the public for a public hearing. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
And would anyone from the public like to be heard? Seeing no one coming forward, I make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cahalan? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Some duty bound, back to the board, Mr. DiMarco?
Still nothing.
Mr. Nersia?
Nothing.
Mr. Miller?
I just want to know why there's no more fire suppression.
Oh, that's not under the application, Joe.
I just wondered.
You can't ask that question.
Why is there no more fire suppression?
The law changed.
It's not a requirement.
New York State law.
I know, I'm just saying, I'm just wondering, why would they not, they take away the fire suppression from the forms?
They put other, they put other things into the code where you have now an emergency stop outside and inside the building that can immediately stop the fuels-
From going.
From going to the tanks to increase the chance of-
No more Halon, it's dangerous.
After it explodes, the-
Okay, so the shell answer man is finished. Mr. Cahalan, anything?
I have nothing further.
And I don't either. I think you've addressed the tests for the area variance concisely, clearly, and to my satisfaction. I make an application to adjourn this matter for resolution at the next meeting. Is there a second to my-
I'll second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Have a good night, thank you.
Next matter on the calendar is number eight, Montgomery Avenue. This is in, okay. Montgomery Avenue, going once? If you can come forward, proceed, and while you're setting up, I'm going to mention that this is an area variance for a proposed in-ground pool and patio. So if you can state your name and address for the record and proceed.
Jerry Barrett, landscape architect.
Get to the mic.
Got to get to the mic. Thanks, Jerry, but got to be on tape.
I'm sorry, I was delaying him a bit.
That's okay.
Good evening, I'm Jerry Barrett. I'm a landscape architect, 109 Port Hill Road, Easton, Connecticut. I'm here on behalf of the Sanchez property at 189 Montgomery Road. The owners of this property would like to develop an outdoor activity area in their backyard that would include a small in-ground pool, eight by sixteen, for the children to play in, as well as an outdoor patio area that would include areas for cooking, dining, and entertaining, and that's shown on the plan. The subject property is a corner lot. It has a small backyard. If you look at the aerial photograph on that plan in the upper right-hand corner, you can see how much farther the house is set back from the road as it is to the back property line. So we ended up with a very small backyard. So what we did was, we looked at the plan and we tried to fit everything in that the owners would like to see in their backyard, and we established the setbacks for the pool from the side and rear lot line. I believe there were ten-foot setbacks, so we tried to respect those so as not to infringe any closer on a neighbor. Unfortunately, that put us about six point eight feet or so, the pool to the house, code asks for ten feet, so we needed a, like a three-point-two-feet, three-point-two-foot variance to put the, to position the pool closer to the house than what code allows. The other thing is, we looked at the property and when we, when we developed the plan for it and we did the area calculations, we realized that we had about a hundred and forty-seven square feet more of impervious area than code would allow on this lot. So we needed about a five percent variance there. We had discussed this with the building inspector, and he suggested perhaps we may want to offer an alternative. And what we did was, there's an alternative plan right above the main plan, it's about centrally located on the plan, and what we did was, we took an area where the overage was on the impervious and we switched it out to like a trex deck where water goes through it. And we tried to do it in such a way that it would look like a design feature, like an inlay, and the owner really doesn't like that idea because when that inlay is there, then she's forced to have her furniture or whatever positioned there and she can't move things around. So it kind of limits her flexibility. You know, I would be a little concerned with differential settlement. I don't know if one's going to settle and you might end up with a tripper and a lip. So while it would alleviate the need for the, for the coverage or the impervious area variance, the owner, I think her preference would be to, to just have a masonry deck, one all-smooth deck where she could move things around wherever she wants to move them. So we did go through your five points. You know, we feel that because this property is, it's evergreen screened, you can't see in, you can't see into it, you can't see out of it, so we don't think that there's going to be any impact on the neighborhood because nobody's ever going to see this. So, and pools and patios, they're common in backyards. So we don't think there'd be any impact on the neighborhood. You know, could we, could we, you know, solve this by not getting a variance? I don't think so for the pool, for the coverage, for the impervious area, yeah, we could switch to the, as we just talked about, the trex, but we don't think the variances requested are substantial. We don't think there's going to be any adverse impact on the environment during construction. You know, typical protocols, silt fences and all that kind of thing will be put in place to prevent erosion to adjacent areas following construction. Everything will be stabilized with either paving or trees or grass, so there won't be any erosion. And we'll be picking up any, any runoff from the patio into a stormwater management system. We'll be putting some dry wells in the front yard. We're also going to take the pool pumps and, you know, for seasonal drawdown, when they pull that water down, we will direct that flow into the, into the dry wells, so we don't think there's going to be any impact to the environment. So, yes, it's the owners, owners wish to build this pool, so, and I guess in some sense that, you know, she is creating this issue, but we think with the extenuating circumstances, the positioning of the house back far in the lot, that, but we think at the end of the day, will this project impact the neighborhood? We don't think so principally because you're never going to see it.
Okay, thank you for your application. I'm going to ask you, if you don't mind, just stay there for a moment because the board will have questions or comments, but before that, Mrs. Yuli, could you characterize a conversation you had with a fire department representative, Mr. Pintavalli?
Yes, I'd like to discuss two different issues, so, and that's why I was out in the hallway speaking to the applicant, because unfortunately I wasn't able to inform him of this, but we did, any, anytime we have a variance with a setback between a pool and a house, we do refer to the fire department, and, you know, by the time I got it to Captain Pintaval, and by the time he was able to respond to me, it was actually later this afternoon. And he actually said, you know, obviously he has no problem with the pool, but he would prefer that the, that the pool be shifted back, so the area variance would really be from, from the rear property line rather than from the house because it, there's a lot going on at the rear of the house there, so that would allow them easier access to the house. So the applicant is, actually would prefer that. They felt that it would be more palatable to the zoning board if the variance was to the house rather than the rear property line. But so, you know, the, the fire captain did say that he would prefer that the pool be shifted back further. And then another thing that I just wanted to say about the trex decking, for zoning comply, and for zoning compliance purposes, we're generally, the issue is not typically the stormwater management issues, it's the, kind of the aesthetic issue, and the way our zoning law is written, unlike the gravel that we talked about the other day, the trex decking doesn't count as impervious surface for that balance of open space and, and so to me, the trex decking is, it does technically eliminate the need for that area variance, but aesthetically, it's, it's not really resolving an issue. It's, 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 you know, the entire backyard is going to look like a patio, and I'm not saying that's a bad thing, I'm just saying that, that by putting the trex decking in, that just means that the dry wells will be sized possibly somewhat differently, not that much probably for a hundred and forty-seven square feet. So I'm, I'm, so, you know, I think if you're looking aesthetically, I kind of agree with the applicant that the patio looks better than the trex decking popped into the patio because it doesn't really resolve the issue with regard to aesthetics, if you understand what I'm saying.
I do, and for the record, the trex decking is a synthetic composite that's made to look like wood. Anything further, Mrs. Yuli?
No, that's it.
Okay, so a point of order, I will have the board ask any questions or comments, but I don't believe we can open the public hearing because the application may change because the variance will change because of the location of the pool.
Yeah, I, I think the concern that I would have is modifying the variance to an extent, it was probably noticed as just an area variance related to pool. The only concern that I have is if a resident viewed it online and thought it meets the ten yards, that ten-foot setback from my property line, then it would be difficult to then approve a variance that shows it-
I agree.
-six feet from the property line, unfortunately.
Yeah, so just so that you understand, we're going to adjourn the matter so that the application can be amended because we can't have a public hearing on this application since it's going to change. But so is, so is your time not having been wasted, let's see if the board has any questions or comments. My only comment is that the impervious surface part of this seemed to be de minimis, and I'm not sure whether introducing something less aesthetically pleasing to the owner and the trex decking really makes much of a difference to me. But, so to the board, any questions, Mr. DiMarco?
No.
Mr. Nersia?
No.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Cahalan?
Actually, I mean, I know the aesthetic isn't everything, but why do we keep on, you know, regardless of how de minimis it is, we have an opportunity to, to eliminate a variance completely. So I don't feel bad asking the owner to put the trex decking in. It's a great product, you know, she can live with the furniture once it's put down, I guess, but, you know, I, I'm tired of the impervious surface meaning we're always exceeding it, always, and I think this is a, one of the few opportunities where there's a real solution for it. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Cahalan. Okay, so I make a motion to adjourn this application for amendment to the September meeting. Is, oh, I'm sorry.
I just would like to add one point about moving the pool back toward the backyard and encouraging on that backyard setback, that if you look at the plan, that there is a driveway there, so it's not like it's adjacent to another neighbor's activity area, it's a driveway.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I think that's would be helpful.
Yeah, that's very fair. Just again, because it's not being exactly located and the exact dimensions of a variance are unknown, it would be impossible to opine on that, so that's why we're adjourned.
Understood.
And then I also want to make the point, which, you know, you are probably already aware of, if you wanted to come up with another alternative that eliminates the need for that a hundred and forty-seven square foot of additional impervious surfaces, you could modify the application to show that as well.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Yuli. Okay, so I make a motion to adjourn the application to the September meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, new matter number nine, 48 Anpel Drive. This is an area variance to permit a driveway addition to increase the width, not the curb cut, but the width. Name and address for the record, and please proceed.
Good evening, board members, chairman. My name is Adama Mayorano from Community Designs and Engineering. On behalf of the applicant and owner, Powell Astakov, we are proposing a front driveway addition, and we are here seeking a zoning variance due to respect of the impervious area coverage. Just to note out on this lot, it's situated in our seven-point-five zoning district, and the existing impervious area is over what is allowed, it's existing non-conforming. So just going to run through the exact numbers really quickly. So on a ten thousand four hundred and forty-two square foot lot, you're allowed four thousand eighty-eight square feet, and what's existing there now is four thousand nine hundred and seventy-five square feet, and we are proposing to increase that another two hundred and thirty square feet, which will result in five thousand two hundred and five square feet. So that's basically one thousand one hundred square feet over what's allowed by the zoning code. So basically, the applicant wishes to increase the front driveway so that they could have two-car width, so that a car could obviously drive into the rear. There's a rear one-car garage. We did look into trying to eliminate some of the impervious area on the lot. It is an oversized lot, but most of it is the house structure itself. It's a fairly large house, so really the only area to basically remove was the rear of the, of the property, and aesthetically, you know, from respect to the neighborhood, visually it wouldn't have any impact because you'd, you know, look at it from the streetscape. But, you know, the pool in the rear yard has just, you know, modest patio around it enough for a lawn chair and, you know, to actually walk by. And then the turnaround for the one-car garage, trying to eliminate some area from that, will create a little bit of an issue with cars trying to back up and turn around and, you know, get into the, the garage itself. And again, it's only a one-car garage, so you can't really maneuver inside the, the garage. So with respect to the neighboring residents, the, you know, most of the homes in that immediate area do, as you can see from the pictures, they are double-car width and width, so it will, you know, fit into the neighborhood very well. And also, you know, the front yard, you could see also from the pictures, there is a, you know, good amount of lawn area, so visually, with respect again to the streetscape, it, you know, will not look like, you know, the whole front yard is paved with asphalt. There is a good amount of area to the right side, so there's existing walkway that'll be, you know, cut out and the driveway will, you know, take over some of that area. So lastly, the good part about the proposed action is that right now there is no stormwater management for, you know, good amount of the driveway because the front portion pitches towards the street. So in our proposed project, we are going to handle some of that runoff with stormwater mitigation onsite, so half of the existing driveway in the front and our proposed additional impervious area will be captured with a new trench drain, and that'll go into a drywall in the front yard underneath the proposed driveway addition.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Mayorano, and just as a point, because we generally have concerns with the widening of driveways, when the curb gets cut and widened because we're losing parking, in this instance, it's actually the opposite. The curb is not being cut, you're widening the driveway, the driveway subsequent to the curb cut, which means you're actually adding parking-
Sure.
...and not taking parking away from the street. That was just my comment, but questions or comments from the board? Mr. Cahalan?
None.
Mr. Miller?
None.
Mr. Nersia?
Nothing.
Mr. DiMarco?
No.
I don't have anything at this time. I make a motion for the public to be heard on this matter, and is there a second to my motion? Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Seeing nobody remaining, I make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second.
Is there a second, Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. DiMarco, anything?
No.
Mr. Nerzia?
No.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Cahalan?
No.
All I have is that I've reviewed your application, you're, to my satisfaction, answered the five-part test. I make a motion to adjourn this application for resolution at the July, the next meeting, the July meetings. Is there a second?
Second.
Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Maiorano. Item ten on the calendar, I'm adjourning it to September, that's Chow Restaurant. And as I mentioned earlier, an old item, 600 White Plains Road, has been adjourned. That'll also be adjourned to the September meeting.